Okay, we come to order, I'll ask the clerk to establish the quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
And all members are present, thank you for that. We do have the agenda here tonight, and this was posted online last Friday. There are some copies out front if they're not already gone. Our people at home can find this on our website. We do have a need to modify our agenda on a couple of items, and these copies were also out front. But we do have a purchase order request from our fire department to the municipal equipment company for purchase order number 2025-2089 for $45,000 for equipment purchase from our ARPA funds. And then second, our attorney's been working on an agreement with EPD for our license and access agreement for property on Marble Top Road that is owned by the county. We'll need to also amend our agenda to add those two items. So I'd like to make a motion tonight to this board that we add those two additional items to our agenda. Is there any other modifications to our agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion for our agenda with those two modifications. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board or the modified agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as modified. Okay, the next thing that we have is our minutes from our last meeting that was held here back on October the 24th, 2024. The clerk has prepared those minutes. Does the board have any corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as prepared by the clerk?
Is there a move?
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart and a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as prepared by the clerk. Okay, we do have three public hearings tonight, and if you've not been with us before, our public hearings, we do those at the front, and there may be a couple of these that we take action on tonight that would be under new business, and we'll break these up separately. So as we go through these, there won't be any action until we get into new business, and then there may or may not be any actions that the board would take. So the first one we have is our ordinance 0-01-24 to amend the land use code. We tabled this at our last meeting on 10/24/2024. We do know that our planning commission is having a meeting next Thursday night, to bring your attention to, where they're going to look closer at the agricultural sections of this, dealing with the chicken houses and setbacks and so forth with that. But there are other things in this document that the board may consider to take up tonight, but we are not taking up the agricultural modifications until after the planning and zoning board takes further look and can make any recommendations that they may have. But when you get into page five, starting with article four, we start getting into solar energy systems. From that point forward, the board would be a pleasure tonight to possibly take action on those. So if anyone would like to speak, I would encourage you to maybe start anything from solar farm, or excuse me, solar energy systems forward on this first one, dealing with any ordinance changes. There's some things in here about mobile homes. Currently, it's a, mobile homes prior to June 15th, 1976, and there's a recommendation to change that to just 20 years and keep that as a rolling average, dealing with mobile homes and also camper trailers and so forth being placed in the county residential zones. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight on this? Please state your name, please.
Jamie Holsey. I appreciate the opportunity to separate some of this, the conglomeration of things to vote on. It was looked at as to run through, and even at planning zoning, to not have time to really talk about, you know, separate items too long within a three-minute period on individual items. So again, I appreciate y'all stepping back, taking a look at that, and the chicken houses being looked at closer. But I want to discuss solar panel, our solar farms, which is large-scale utility level to me. I've been well immersed on solar, being with the power company as an executive there, and I'm all for the technology, you know? I have my gates, solar on my dump trailers, boat batteries, you know, lighting, things like that. There's, and even personal desire to have solar, 5 to 10 KW at their homes, it's a choice to have. If you didn't have subsidies, you couldn't really justify that at your house if you're looking at the return on your money. So just let me address a few concerns, a consideration, and hopefully we'll have further discussion, because you are, all five of you are, any local government is the last line of defense to prevent, you know, risk and things associated with solar. So some of y'all, a lot of y'all probably study solar, you know? Solar only produces energy around 30% of the whole year, you know? It don't happen tonight, don't happen on cloudy days, rainy days, that sort of thing. So 30% of the year is where you get your energy production. This, even at 20%, would put a substantial change to, say, the cove or the agricultural areas, which that's the most desired places for solar. I mean, season when you don't have trees to take down. Even though we've been hit up by a few solar companies, so I said, well, we got 168 square meters worth of trees, I will just mow them down. So anyway, you have fly-by-night solar companies, you know? It's like traveling car salesmen to me, I've dealt with many of them, and educate a lot of them, and they try to educate, they're in there, it's all about the money. So again, the risk around Walker County is, along with Jasper County, next to my sister's farm, they're proposing the biggest solar farm in the state, 2,900 acres. I know for a fact, being on the wildlife board, Georgia Wildlife Federation, there are going to be solar fields, proposed at least, larger than wildlife management areas in Georgia. Now, for what reason? You know, I'll get into that, from what I know. And as you know, and I mentioned it with the reduction or more setbacks on chicken houses, it's all related to farm production, eggs, beans, corn, whatever. And I don't know if you don't know, in the last 10 years, I worked close with the South Georgia farmers when I was CEO of a small co-op down there in Cuthbert, Georgia, but they're reducing farmland, reduction in farmland is happening every year, maybe even daily. They're concerned down there with the studies about, you know, they have a graph of yield per acre, they're concerned with the population going up, farmland reducing. When those points meet, they have a concern of feeding the world. So I've always been set, that stuck in my mind back in probably '08 or '09, that I've seen it, we've seen it here, development, a lot of risk to farmland, inheritance of farmland, the kids don't have enough money to pay the taxes, they sell off, it could be tillhunter, development, things like that. So in the last 10 years, I know for a fact that the country has lost 11 million acres of farming in the last 10 years, farmland. The ingredients of solar panels, you may or may not know, it's mined in China. You know, they're polluting the air like crazy over there, and it's put over here called clean energy. That's a fact. The money flow is the primary driver, to me, in solar. Even though there's a use for it, there's a place for it, but if it wasn't subsidies and this money flow, I don't think these incentives would be offered like, I've been quoted $850 per acre per year. Anyway, I may not finish, but I hope we have further discussion. Power companies drive it because they're mandated by the federal government of a percentage of their wholesale energy that it's renewable. They don't consider nuclear the cleanest energy, that only boils water and causes steam, as clean energy. The government's all about this money flow. So again, a caution about the fly-by-night solar companies, when they go bankrupt, the counties need to consider if there's 200 acres out there of solar panels, these things, they go bankrupt, yeah, fields full of solar with hazardous chemicals, who's going to restore the land? Do we have a way to dispose of these panels, you know, that is hazard chemical? And also, it really don't fit in the comprehensive plan if you're looking at hazardous chemicals being part of the definition of C1 zoning, so that's another thing to look at.
Your time is expired.
And I have a few more things, but I hope we can speak further on this before we make a call.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jamie.
Anyone else would like to speak on this group of ordinance items? Okay, we'll move forward on our agenda.
Wait a minute, is this an extra? Do we get to speak again for our public comment? Or is this it? Or is this just for the ordinances?
This is just for the ordinances.
Oh, yeah, no. I understand.
Yeah.
I guess I was enlightened today with a couple of phone calls, and I guess I'd like to clean the air right now, because I'm not part of any group, I'm not part of any of these individuals that apparently is going around town and people's chatting about. I'm Scott McNabb, I've been here all my life, and anything that I ever come up here and discuss is my views, not anybody else's. So I'd like everybody to know that, so whoever it is that's chit-chatting, I hope I clean the air. How's that? So I guess a big one for me is, I was on planning and zoning for three years, two and a half years, whatever, and I'm a little concerned how I was at a meeting, I have a video, audio of that meeting, two hours and 49 minutes. There's a lot of things I've heard, that people heard, and I mean, I've watched it two or three times, it was done by outside party, and they were there the entire meeting. And I guess I heard the planning commission table every one of these ordinances. And the chatter I heard was, the reason they were talking about chickens tonight, or they're going to talk about chickens only next week, was, was that was all it was commented about. Well, I've got the video, audio, maybe, you know, I'll share, I don't mind, I've got copies of it, but they tabled the entire package, not just one or two. For y'all to be able to break them out like y'all have, I've got my copy of the Enabling Act also, and I've read it, and y'all've got a lot of power, I get that. But I think before we start saying this is the second hearing, because it was heard, y'all can vote on it tonight, where was the first hearing? When was that talked about? Just a question, I know I'm not going to get an answer, but if y'all are going to start talking about the mobile homes and all that stuff that I'm seeing here, we never heard anything from the planning commission. Like I said, once they started talking about these ordinances, it blew up on chicken houses and poultry, period. There was never any discussion by the planning commission, which is 11 people that has been handpicked by individual, and then as a group, all of them's been vetted and voted on by y'all. And if y'all are not going to believe or understand that they're out there for y'all, that's a problem. I mean, if I was the planning commission, I wouldn't want to be on it if y'all are not going to, at least, you're putting them out front for all these different line items, but then you turn right around and vote something different. You know, that's tough. Well, I spend $6,000 a year paying those people with all the education they have to do. I mean, that's a lot. So like I said, I'm concerned on how y'all can legally, maybe the attorney can light me, I don't know, maybe y'all've got that power. The Enabling Act is strong, I've read it. But to be able to break those ordinances out and handpick which ones y'all want to do, I'm confused, because I was there, the planning commission voted, and it was, I don't know the exact vote, but it was enough to carry, because they tabled the land ordinance use codes. So that's all I got right now.
Anyone else on the land use ordinance? Okay, we'll move forward. The next one that you can come make public comment on is ordinance number 0-02-24 to amend the alcoholic beverage code. It's also in the packet. The main thing here is going from 1,500 feet, from front door to front door of a retail package, to 15,080 feet. Tasting events should only be permitted inside the licensed premises. Couple of the main changes there. Anyone wants to speak on this?
Number four.
Hart, I just said, was it?
Number four.
Oh, yes, I thought, yeah, thank you, yeah, that's a good point. So that was a big change. So, well, let me read that part. It's provided here with that, no license shall be issued for retail package sales or distilled spirits unless the number of active retail distilled spirits license issued in Walker County is no more than three. License per county, commission, district. As an additional requirement, no license shall be issued for retail package sale of distilled spirits unless the number of active retail distilled spirits issued within the same county district is no more than three. So currently, that is at five per district. This would take it down to three, and we've had a moratorium on that. So Mr. Ed, if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium.
Good evening, I'm, my question is...
Please state your name.
Ed Yates.
Thank you, sir.
My question is really nothing to address, it's just a question. I brought up the last time, we were mentioned that no outdoor tasting, and I've been involved with several wineries, and they do do outdoor tasting. And I think that is a problem, and if, maybe I misunderstood what you said, but I understood that that was going to be prohibited. And I think that's a very poor idea, because Catoosa County, I know, has at least two wineries in them now, one of them's the first in the state of Georgia, and I have dissipated in numerous outdoor tastings at that winery. And in, I think, Delonaga, is that White County? I can't remember the county, in Delonaga and several other counties. Lincoln County, several places have been outdoor tasting, so I think that's a problem with Walker County, short-sighted. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Okay, we'll move forward. The ordinance number 0-03-24 to amend the animal code. This mainly is about spaying and neutering and microchipping animals in our county. Anyone wants to speak on this? Yes, Mr. Ed, then ma'am, you'll be next. Come on up there.
I'm going to quote something, gentlemen, one of my friends told me today, lived 10 years in China, and it's a Chinese proverb. A bad law poorly enforced makes everyone a lawbreaker eventually. And he told me a story about speeding, and they have, there's no control except for cameras. And so everybody, when they get to where a camera is, they have to slow down and go the speed limit. And there's ordinances that are permanent on riding public transportation, the buses. The buses are packed wall-to-wall people. When a bus gets near a checkpoint, everybody stops the curve before and exits the bus, and walks to the checkpoint, and waits on the next bus, because they're fine. So, you know, are they breaking the law? Well, technically, yeah, and that's the kind of thing that they live under. And the spay and chip, castrate, chip the animals, I think it's not a bad idea, but the problem is, I've heard, I heard nothing the last meeting on how it would be enforced. Well, it was on some neighbor complaints. That's great. That can be abused, and I see nothing in the way it's written that would be, not take place, and that's not right. I don't want somebody coming on my property, my understanding, and I may be incorrect, there's already a lease law, and that's not being enforced. Y'all don't enforce it? You can't enforce it, you don't have the staff to do it. You don't have the staff from, at the present, to not implement, but to enforce this potential ordinance, spay, castrate, or chip them. You know, I live on several acres, my dog is not on leash, except when I go places. Then she's hooked up, she gets out of the car, she's under control, she doesn't even have to be leased, but I do it because that's what the law says. But what are you going to do? How are you going to enforce it? I don't see anything that will indicate you've got the staffing to do it, the money to do it. We can't, we can't afford to euthanize the pets that we have, or we no longer do it. I mentioned that I'd taken, I'd paid for six cats to be spayed. There used to be somebody that did it cheaply, but everybody I talked to was between $250 and $350, and I found one part, one group, and they no longer do it, they charged, by the time you got it done, it was $100. That's not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money. It's, you know, $100 is what 20 used to be when I traveled for a living, so that's, that's a lot. I just, I don't see a way to enforce this statute. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're next. Please state your name, will you start, please?
All right, my name's Karen Miller, and I just want to start by acknowledging and thanking the Walker County Animal Shelter and Animal Control staff. They do a very valuable service for our community, and it's a very hard job, particularly right now, because we have an overpopulation of pets. So there are far more dogs and cats than there are homes. And so we are seeing people, you know, just dump animals on the side of the road, we're seeing people move and just leave their pets behind, just turning their animals out and saying, let them fend for themselves. And that puts a huge burden on animal control and on the shelter. And that's costing our tax dollars, you know, caring for these animals in the shelter, euthanizing them when they have to. And I would personally rather see my tax dollars go towards spaying and neuter possibly, instead of euthanizing. I know that our shelter today, they actually helped, I think, 38 community pets get spayed and neutered today, so there are resources out there for people with, where the money is a concern, you know, there's chat and neuter, there's, there are options out there where you can get low-cost spay, neuter, and microchipping. And I support this ordinance, because it's addressing the problem at the source, you know, it's preventing those unwanted litters from even being born. This is a situation where, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So if we can cut it off early, you know, that really just takes the burden off of our county services. I listened in to the last meeting, and I heard the shelter manager, Emily Sadler, she was talking about how this is really intended to go after people who are like habitual offenders, repeat offenders. She was talking about, you know, they've got people who multiple times a year are bringing in litters. And when you got people like that doing that, without an ordinance like this, you don't really have a way to solve the problem. So I kind of think you need something like this, you know, to deal with those habitual offenders. So I hope the board will pass this ordinance, and I thank you for your time. Thanks.
What do you say to that?
Jamie Holsey. Number one, we have an issue with animals running through the woods. There's risk rabies, there's risk affects wildlife, game animals, they put a bounty on cats years ago, my granddaddy told me out west, because cats were an issue, they put a bounty on cats. My religious belief around animals, God gave these animals for us to use, okay? Gave the hoofed animal for us to eat, okay? And so population of controlling animals, where it is, is spaying and neutering is good, who can afford that or not, but, but when the doors closed up here, it's no different than a homeless veteran, don't have a homeless place to put him, like Charlie. It took a year and a half to even potentially have a place to put him, and God says, don't kill, okay? Cobb County has turned, they euthanized, they have to make space, a period of time, make space to bring other animals in, to get it in control. You can't do it on one end, you got to do it on both ends to get the hazard and risk out of there. So God gives us this power, I don't, you know, don't much care what law says about, yeah, I don't believe my horses, we just had a horse die, we have horses, dogs, cats, goats, cows, I mean, we got the works. I'm all for treating animal good, but when it's controlling the population, we got to look at both ends in a way to make room for these animals and not create this place where they're all bundled up, because many people say, well, animal control's not going to come get them, because they don't have a place to put them. So they don't come get them, number one, okay? To get them and euthanize, or spay them, or neuter them, put shit, who's going to bring them in? Who's, you know, so you got this closed door here, without accommodating this flow of animals to have a controlled balance, just like deer, squirrels, or anything else that I work with at the, on the Federation for wildlife. So it's my comment, and thank you.
Anyone else on the else? Please go forward.
My name is Mary Mayo. My understanding that this law is to require everyone to have their animals spayed, neutered, and chipped, is that correct?
That's the draft at the moment.
Okay.
It's just a draft.
To me, that's an example of extreme government overreach. I understand it's a problem, unfortunately, I don't have a solution, but you say you're not going to hold everyone to this, just certain people, and that's just wrong. If you're going to have a law, it has to apply to everyone. All my animals are spayed, neutered, I don't want to go the expense of getting them chipped, that's a whole nother expense. But one time I had 10 cats, they were all spayed and neutered, so I did good care of them, I think now I've only got five. But anyway, that's my view, I know it's like that in Australia, socialist country, I don't want to see that here. I can see that right now you won't go after, but just certain people, but when will that change? If there's someone you don't like, you know, go over to their house, you know? I just think that's a very separate slogan, we should not go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The else? Okay, we'll move forward here. At this time of our meeting, we do have public comment, and this is where you can come and comment on any topic that you would like. We do ask that you use your time wisely, so we would like you to focus on things that we can make a difference with, we can't solve all the national problems, or the world's problems, so if you can talk to us about things that maybe we can have an impact on, that would be great for all of us, so who would like to come first? Yes, Scott, come on up, please.
Scott McNabb, District One. I guess I go back to where I was at a while ago about the ordinance splitting. I really, I just read it again, part of the Enabling Act, and I see that it does have some power there that probably allows y'all to do this. And I guess it needs, my question would be this, to someone, is if this was discussed by whomever, and they decided that, okay, this was heard, this wasn't, based on some video, audio, whatever, because like I said, I was at that meeting, and it was, it was interesting. And I guess I'd like to start with asking whoever's in charge of that, and I guess y'all, you guys are not the day-to-day, it'd be Mr. Whitfield, so I guess this question can go to him, and he can answer it later, or do whatever he wants. But if he handles the day-to-day, I guess I would like to know who and why individuals were allowed to tell whoever to take that particular item out of this group, there, I think there was 15 total. So we're taking number nine out, let's just say, and we're leaving the other 14 for y'all to discuss and make a decision on. I guess I'd like to know who made that decision, because that's important. Like I said, to me, it was a, when it was presented to the public and to that planning commission, it was submitted as a hold, and they were fixing, and that's why the, all the uproar started occurring was, several of the guys own the planning commission, not just one or two, but several, all looked at one another like, how can we vote yes or no, when every one of them are a different item, a different topic? So you'd be asking me to vote on chickens, I may be fine with four or five of them and said yes, but for me to go across the board and say yes to all of them, I don't, that's a far reach, so to start with... So for, to start with, somebody send it to the planning commission as a hold. I think I'd like to know, as a citizen, who made that decision to do that, because I don't think it was proper, for one. And now I'm standing here before you guys tonight, two weeks later, three weeks later, whatever, four weeks now, I guess, and I'm seeing it broken out to where there's 14, and the only one that's not going to be discussed possibly, and y'all vote on, is the chickens. Because I personally worked on the chickens five years ago, and spent hours with several folks making little schematics. I only provided Mr. Hart with a couple that really stood out and seemed to be the right thing or a possibility for the chicken farmers, because it's all about how much you can put on a particular amount of property. And we had little schematics drawn, and I don't know whatever happened to it there. Again, it's been going on for five or six years, and why all of a sudden, you know, we're right here at the end of this year, and we're trying to rush it through, I get it, let the planning commission do their part next week, I understand that one, but I think the planning commission, since you guys chose them as a whole, let them do their job, give them all 15 of these things, and let them hash it out and give y'all a recommendation. That's all it's about. My understanding, everything I read, all they do is give you guys a recommendation, but the problem that I've got with it is every one of them were chosen by this group, and for y'all not to carry through, why put them out there in front and pay them what you do? To me, it's just a wash. I don't understand why you would rebut what they say. If they say deny it, then it's, you guys, that's what they're for. You're putting them out there to review the information and the public input, because there's usually sometimes it's a little bit bigger gathering than here. I just think, I would consider y'all looking at this, and like I said, I'm asking, I guess, Mr. Whitfield, how, or is he the one that sent the stuff to Mr. John and Mr. Haney? My understanding, Mr. Haney is the planning commission chair, but yet we don't see him here when there's anything to do with the planning commission, just a question. Back when I was on it, the gentleman always showed up if there was an issue with planning, he was sitting back there, because he was the planning chair. John, I know he's over the codes instructions, construction. Planning director, okay? There's a new title.
Been, been, been to the planning director for a long time. I was the planning director at one time.
Okay. Because I found the resolution where he was put in as codes construction, and David Brown was another title, so that's the only resolution I found. So that's my question, is how it got to where it got, and who made that decision to separate it and bring it before you guys?
Anyone else on public comment, open comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Pope. Robert Stoltz, I just want to follow up on what we was talking about. Last time I was here, I missed two or three meetings, but I had asked you your interpretation on something, and you refused to answer. Well, that, what I asked you was your interpretation of exception clause, and the exception clause states, "Itself, as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested in the Board and reserved to its exclusive jurisdiction." Now, I'm not going to ask you a question tonight, not going to ask you for interpretation, but I do want to give you my interpretation of this clause. Of course, I'm a non-professional, just a layman, jackleg, anything you want to call me, but my interpretation is that this statement is clearly self-explanatory, and it means exactly what it says, and that is, "Itself, as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested in the Board and reserved to its exclusive jurisdiction." Now, that's my interpretation, which means you don't have any jurisdiction, governing jurisdiction, over jumping to the previous section of, into the chairperson and trying to seize his responsibilities. Now, so I was just disappointed when this board went, spent thousands of taxpayers' dollars studying how to do exactly that. Now, that is just my interpretation. Now, district commissioners, can y'all tell me where I'm going wrong on my interpretation? Any of you?
I'll comment, Mr. Jim, just to try to understand. What, where are you reading that on your?
Page seven.
Page seven, exception clause.
First paragraph.
Okay. Except, as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested in... So what are you, what is your question? What are you saying, what are you asking the interpreter? How are you asking this? What is the question you're asking? I don't understand, I'm trying to understand what you want, what you want answered.
Okay, I gave you my interpretation, did you hear? When I gave it to you?
Yeah, I heard it, yes, sir.
So now then, I'm asking you if any of you wants to speak up and tell me where I am going wrong on my interpretation.
Well, I don't know that you're wrong, and I don't know that you're right. How's that? I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure how to answer what your interpretation is of the exception clause. I'm not sure, and to be honest with you, in reading it, I'm not an attorney either, I'm a hayseed like you are, and so I can't answer that question. I'd like to try to, but I don't have an answer for it, but I can tell you this, I'll get you an answer for that, for that exception clause. I'll get an interpretation of, from the people that put this together, of what it was meant when it was put in here. I'll ask those questions in five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Be glad to.
Does any others want to tell me where I'm wrong? Well, that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, sir, Mr. Randy.
I'm Randy Kitten, and I'm representing the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. We're currently working on a project with American Legion Post 217 Auxiliary for reefer veterans at the Tennessee Georgia Memorial Park. The reefer $10, I spoke on this before, we're about two-thirds away to our fundraiser goal, which is pretty good, no longer than we've been at this. We'll be at the Food City tomorrow evening here in La Feta from four to seven. If you're in La Feta, stop by and throw a dog a bone, you know, we appreciate it. We need volunteers to help lay the reefs on December the 14th at 8:00 a.m., starting at eight, rain or shine. And I'd also like to thank some of our sponsors that have helped us out, some individuals, Def Yalman, Mike Cameron, Commissioner Stoltz, some businesses, Lane Funeral Home, Rossville, the American Legion, the Wilson Family, Second Baptist Church of La Feta, and we had a few 500-plus dollar donors that we want to recognize, the American Legion Post 339 in La Feta, the American Legion Post 217 in Chickamauga, the VFW Post 3679 in Fort Overthorpe, and Valley Mechanical. Valley Mechanical's taking care of the transport of all the reefs and stuff. So that's where we're at, it's looking good. If you can donate, donate. Cut-off for donations is Monday, November the 18th. Come help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Ed Yates. I got a story. Y'all heard that before. Well, Jack in the Beanstalk, I think most people know the story. You know, he was charged with selling the cow because they needed the money. He didn't follow the instructions. He made a poor trade, poor implementation, no forethought of the consequences. No due diligence. I just question sometimes some of the commission's actions and what they've done. One first example would be Rossville Civic Center. We've never collected any rent. That's, you know, it's cost us a lot of money, we've not collected rent. We fixed the roof. Matter of fact, excuse me, I need that minute, y'all worked on the roof. It leaked. I forgot the amount of money we spent, but it was a lot. And here's the pictures, well, it might not to her, here's some pictures of the roof. This is five years ago, 2019. These big, this is all light amount of water, these are puddles of water, it's where the roof leaks. Well, it got fixed. This was done a few months ago. Guess what? The puddles are in the same spot. Well, that doesn't seem like very good, you know, somebody should have checked. I think the warranty's fixing to expire, it needs to be checked on. You know, there's, was a ramp poured for public access. It's not done according to the safety codes, federal safety codes, the ramps are the wrong heights, the wrong distances, drainage is pretty poor. There's no handrail, and that's been at least a month, maybe six weeks, there's still no handrails. There's pieces of rebar stuck with yellow caution tape, run around it to keep people, well, this is the edge of the ramp, the edge of the concrete. There's no safety caps, or the one a week ago, there were no safety caps on the rebar. If somebody falls and is impaled by one of those things, and they're dead, what kind of lawsuit is that for Walker County? You know, it, there's, you know, I understand, you know, the one thing y'all are asking to do that I've heard, is you want to go to one meeting a month. Well, you got twice the topics, six days' notice to the citizens, which we have a hard time keeping up and getting open records to find out what the truth actually is. Oh my, and you want us to give you more time to study? Well, I know what people do, they procrastinate. So you last two days, and you're gonna spend twice as much work looking at it? I call it banure, I don't believe it.
What's your opinion? Because that's not...
I'm just telling, just, I don't need your comments, I've gotten short of time. All right, you know, you've given $2.4 million away to a private corporation. There's a, we own Macklemore, what do you call it, Macklemore Farm. Mountain Cove Farm, we bought wrongly, should be bought it, but we don't have the facilities to rent the cap sites out. The bathrooms don't work, showers don't work. If you rented 50%, it's about $300,000 a year. We ignore that. We're not, you know, y'all have not done due diligence, and I want it, I said it before, I'm gonna say it again, I want it changed. I want y'all to take care of business, proper due diligence, with a little bit of foresight. We could have used that $2 million a year plus for 30 years to make Mountain Cove Farms profitable. We chose not to. I think it's poor thought.
I'm gonna comment on that, Mr. Ned. As far as the one meeting a month, you made a very valid point when you said about, when you talked about how long we have to turn around an agenda, and when we have people that want information, that need information, or that have asked for information, or we need to look at the information. We have a meeting tonight, tomorrow's Friday, then it's Monday and Tuesday, and then the draft agenda for the following week comes out. It's three working days. We need more time to be transparent, to do our due diligence. Two meetings a month, trying to push two meetings a month, when every other, the other entities that we work with, planning commission, for instance, one meeting a month. So, you know, we're still waiting now on, they were gonna have a work session, we tabled it, we've tabled some of this one time already, and they've had a month to have a work session. So I'm just, all I want to do is to comment on the one meeting a month, and it's for a reason. I've been here to every meeting for four years, let me take that back, I've missed a couple, so, but I understand how hard it is to try to get the information together, and then get the information that the citizens are asking for, and then for us to be able to look at it and make solid decisions, I think we need more time. That's just my opinion, but I just wanted to share it with you. Thank you.
May I say one more?
No, you're a beadle.
Jamie Holsey, I believe your label in that, when you went to the five board commission requires you to have two meetings a month.
Your initial label, that sure does, and by home rule, we can change it.
And need more time, there has been inconsistencies, not in a three-day period, to receive open records, and I don't think y'all individually are sitting there providing open records requests. So the man back there, delays, only includes partials, there are many discrepancies in the Open Records Act, and I read that to y'all, as we all know, we all know the Open Records Act, but keeping that from public comment, and just as we talked about tonight, all the items on the land development was like crammed in. How could anybody be so prepared, with not enough public hearing? It is so important with solar, chicken houses, whatever, to have public hearing, and I don't believe a public hearing is only public comment, because we're sitting here having public hearing, not knowing how you might even act on any of these things. So how can we have a discussion with public to even have a discussion? There, I guarantee you, there's people in this county might be smarter than y'all, they're smarter than me, so why not have a true hearing to have discussion on some of these things that affects 60-something thousand people, just like Macklemore? Don't tell me that on effect, 60-something thousand folks, that we should have had long public discussions in a public hearing. A hearing, to me, is two-way, not one-way, so we're having a public hearing, not knowing where y'all might be going. I mean, why can you not respond at a public hearing to say, well, here's what we intend to do, you know, and then we may have more accurate or consistent, or something you might could even use? So this, not a time, I know you're, the district job's part-time, but I'll go back to when you're serving 60-something thousand people, in my mind, I don't know how it could be defined or even looked at as a part-time job, when you got a lot of people counting on you, a lot of tax dollars.
I could go back to the Enabling Act as well.
I know, it says part-time, but how in your mind can you cover everything? It's to find it's part-time. But that's what I'm saying. You just said yourself, you're overwhelmed with stuff, trying to do this, so why not back up and give everybody more time, tell them not make instant decisions, and have a true public hearing to discuss? We're all about it, you know, we know, we do research. My half of my marriage is 10 times smarter than me, ideas are out there, please use them. Have committees, forums, you know, and discussions, you know, every business has it all the time. Well, we want the best, as y'all do, for the citizens. So again, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Okay, move forward, public comment will be closed. So since we tabled last month the unfinished business of ordinance O-01-24 to amend the Land Use Ordinance Code, is there any discussion of the board on this ordinance?
So I attended that meeting, I think Mr. Moorehouse is here, one of our members that's on that board, I think he's the only one that's here. And it was presented to that group that it was a package approval. Since that meeting, we've determined that we can approve pieces of that. But when that board left that meeting, it was voted on to table the package, as they thought it was a package, until they could have this work session next week.
thought it was a package, until they could have this work session next week and determine how to vote on it. Now, that's a thick packet, and the work session's an hour. So, that's a lot to get through. They are working on that tonight. Actually, a group of folks, some poultry farmers are working with our county agents tonight, working on some of those changes for that piece of it. But since the Planning Commission tabled the packet, when they walked out of that room a month ago, they tabled it. In their mind, they were gonna rehear it next week. So I think we should support that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other discussion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like Mr. Percy to come up for just a second.
John Percy, please come up.
Thank you, Ms. Percy. So, the planning session that will take place, work session, that will last approximately how long?
One hour.
One hour?
Yes, sir.
And that's gonna include poultry, as well as if, if none of these are voted on tonight, it will include all of those, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There's a hardship one, there's a camper. There's a lot of verbiage that's being changed because there's IRC, International Residential Code, there's IBC, which is commercial code, just some of the wording in there to change that as well. So just to clarify a few things, Mr. McNabb said that, you know, the packet and the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission receives this packet one month prior to the meeting to get prepared, to review, to do their homework, and to go over what's in this packet. Correct? So, they have one month. So whatever concerns or questions in a, in a public hearing to view these should be prepared so we can have a punctual, professional conversation regarding these ordinance. I did, and it's video recorded as well, tell the public as well as the board which items were on this, on this ordinance change. The reason it's changed as a packet because the code is changing. The land development code as a whole changes. There are all land development, section 22 of our ordinance. And so that's uniform throughout municipalities as well. So that's why it was done and presented when it was put together like that.
And so, some of these ordinances, we are, we were kind of exposed on, correct? I mean, if someone wants to move in a very old mobile home-
Yeah, right now it's 1976, so roughly, what, a 49-year-old trailer can move in right now, or mobile home, excuse me. So we're changing that, or trying to propose changing that to 20-year, which would be a rolling number 10 years from now. Same thing with a camper. Gary Williams had a question about living in a camper, or if his mom comes in, if someone was to pass away or whatnot. That's not what that's saying. You're more than welcome to have family members come in and stay in your camper. Camper's not a habitable dwelling. It's not safe to live in. And so that's what that's regarding. As we know, we've worked with people in the community, Stoltz, your district, with you and somebody that's lived there for a year and a half or so. So we are willing to work with folks in hardship situations. We did have a veteran that was looking for housing, and the family was helping him, so we did work with him on that as well. So the county's more than willing to work with folks. But a camper, mobile, you know, RV, a recreation vehicle is not designed as a permanent, long-term habitable dwelling unit, so that's what that's in there for.
Okay.
So, things of that nature. That's, so there's mobile homes, there's a hardship definition. You know, ordinance is like a breathing organism. They change, they back up and punt, you have to review them yearly. You know, we might get a desire for something else coming in the future besides solar. And so when that happens, we'll have to back up and revise these as well. Probably something you have to review, you know, biannually or annually and back up and see what we need to change. It's just been years since any ordinance had been revised or changed, so that's why there's so many in that packet. Times have changed and we've just failed to adapt and grow with those times. So that's what that, that's why there's so many in there.
So with regard to the hour work session, do you think that the Planning Commission can get through all of these and poultry in an hour? Do you think they can?
Yeah, there's, there's no way. I mean, it'd be impossible. The reason poultry was such a hot topic is the community was there to speak up against it. And so that's why it was the topic of discussion. Gary Williams brought up the camper issue, and it was explained. It was just, I think he was interpreting that you can't pull a camper in and have your family member come from Minnesota or wherever you choose to come from and stay with you for a week, you know?
Right.
So we explained that to him, but the poultry stuff was what was discussed because there was community outreach on that. There was no other community outreach or discussion took place about any of the other ordinance or concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One thing too, so everyone is aware, the audience and also the board, we did enact a temporary moratorium in regards to solar energy because our ordinance did not address solar energy. And so that moratorium has expired. So, once the board decides tonight whether or not they want to move forward on any of the ordinance 01-24, that would then trigger whether or not we need to look at Resolution R.42-24, where it says to enact a temporary moratorium on acceptance of permits, because we had that moratorium in place at sunset due to time limit. And so the board will need to make a decision tonight to either pass a solar ordinance, or to extend the moratorium, or let the moratorium die. So that's a decision that will need to be made tonight when it comes to solar, whether to moratorium, no moratorium, or put an ordinance in place. Just wanted to make everyone aware of that, because that is a little confusing.
Understood.
Any additional conversation, comment from the board?
I wanna, I do want to comment, I wanted to look at something right quick. On our, on the distilled spirits, and I know we're not on that right now, but Mr. Yates made a point, and I thought we had discussed this prior, because I was, I was under the interpretation that we were talking about distilled spirits tasting at liquor store facilities and not, not wine at wineries.
Yeah. If y'all don't mind, we'll get our director to come back up. We'll let John come back up and we get to that one, and we'll talk some more about that, because we do need some clarification on that, on the taste testing.
I agree. I'm not about stopping wineries and farms from having things.
So, the one that we've got on the floor right now is under unfinished business ordinance statutes, O-0124, dealing with land use. So, it's be up to the board to determine if there's any action to be taken tonight on that, or if you want to table this again.
You know, my question is, and Brian had a valid point there, and Robert as well. So, an hour work session. Now, so we, so we're in here sometimes for three and four and five hours doing the work that we need to do. And I'm not sure how we've just scheduled an hour work session, but I don't see, you know, like I said, the packets were out of 30 days prior, and it just kind of, I want to, I want to go through and work on, and get these things right. I think that's very important that we do that. And I think that, you know, we do need to discuss some things, but I'm a little frustrated, I guess would be the best word, that we're having to have this discussion here when, like I said, I wish that we, that it could have been handled a little differently, maybe at the Planning Commission meeting level to start with. And then I'm a little disappointed that we've taken almost a month past the next commission meeting to even have the work session. And then I'm concerned, is that work session going to address all the issues? And so I, I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm kind of hung up here. There is definitely some discussion needs to be had on some of the, and I think some of it's pretty cut and dried and clear. And so that's why, I'm just kind of wondering if, you know, if we don't need to look at some of this, that's, well, for instance, the mobile home, that stuff like that, the camper stuff. People living in campers, if it's illegal and we're not enforcing stuff like that here again, that's, that gets right back to exposure. Everything leads back to liability. I mean, anybody can use that excuse anytime. We, you know, exposure, exposure, we all, we know that. It's true.
But that comes down to life safety.
That's a life safety issue, is what that is. It definitely is.
Let me interject. My recommendation to the Planning Commission on any time they have a public hearing before a meeting, just like what we do here, we have public hearings. That's what we start with, and we go however long we need to go. So even with our work, with a work session, they should be done the same way, whatever timeline it takes. I hate to see them put bookends on a work session. They should have their work session whatever time it takes, and then if they have action items, then they just follow that right after. And as long as they don't start early on their action items, if they've advertised that their meeting is at 6:00, just like when we've had situations here before, we've had, you know, a public hearing on a tax millage rate setting or something, and sometimes there's been a time or two, we've had to wait until the clock to get to that time. But if we anticipate with the Planning Commission that their work session really needs to be longer than an hour, then we could just make a request that they don't put bookends on that, and whatever it takes, and then take up their action items after that.
So, let me understand what, so you're saying that if we decided to table, they would have, we're going to require them to have the work session until they can go through everything and come back with whatever they're gonna, is that?
Well, my thought was, was request, I guess this board could vote to require them to extend their work session until they're finished. There would be another option. So their work session's at what time? Is it at 5:00? 5:00 o'clock, and then their scheduled regular meeting is at 6:00?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when, so if they needed to go to 6:30 or 7:00 or whatever it took to get through that work session, and then they would just immediately start their action items immediately after the work session? And that way you don't put a bookend on that work session time? Because I think there's a consensus that it may take more than an hour, potentially, because there's just quite a few pages. And if they did not put a time limit on their time, that would give them the opportunity to work in that work session. So during the work session, typically, that's limited to the commission itself. Typically, work sessions don't allow for public comment. It's working within the board itself and in consultation with the director or any legal counsel.
All right, so my question, and this is, John Percy, this would be a question that you can answer for me, please, sir.
John, please, please come on up, John, if you would, so everyone at home can hear.
I want to understand this so we, so we can get this right. So, go, please explain one more time so I get this clear. On the, on the, the section that where our actual ordinance or the regulations are changing, the state regs, the section 22?
That's right.
Okay. And that entails every, the land, right, all of the land use?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, where were there questions, and when I, we say the land use now, the poultry as well, is that considered the land use, or is that considered under agriculture?
That's, that's in section 22.
So it's all in that same section?
That's correct.
Okay. So is there, so are there pieces of this, out of these 14 or 15 items, that are, that are, like you said, that are mandated or that are changing before we would have an opportunity to hear if we, if we put that, if we put that, those off? In other words, I'm asking are there part, I'm trying to ask if there's parts that-
No, I mean, the part that was-
That wouldn't be up for discuss, but, let me, let me clarify. Parts that wouldn't be up to Planning Commission discussion, or our discussion really, that are part of staying in compliance with section 22 as things change? I guess that's what-
Yeah, and there's nothing statewide changing or legislation change currently that's taking place that would, you know, I know there's a moratorium for the solar stuff, of course, so that's, it expired on the 9th. And so nothing else in section 22 is pending as far as state requirements. The subject matter from the meeting or from our board was the poultry stuff.
And like I said, the other, as far as any of the other discussion there at that night was mainly, and Brian, you were there, was the poultry is what they were, was concerned with. Because we got, received an email, I think you were copied, I think we all were copied from the, the, the commission chairman, that had stated that they thought that that was the only, the work session was going to be for the poultry. That's the way I, I read the email. Did I misread it, or is that kind of?
I think that was the assumption from a lot of members. Cindy had come into the office, said she was working, had some ag meetings, think they're having one tonight as well. And so she was trying to just get updated on a couple of, she just ran across a couple of the agenda items, or it was poultry items, before she went to her meeting tonight. I guess they had one last week possibly as well, or earlier this week.
I have it personally.
Okay, so there, she was planning on a meeting tonight, so she come in to, had to wrap her head around that as well, so they're meeting tonight on it. So I think that was the assumption, that that was, I think the same thing with our chair as well. But that's what the open meeting-
It's a little confusing to some. So the meeting tonight is some local farmers meeting with the ag extension office. It's not the Planning Commission meeting.
That's correct, yes.
It's just citizens meeting upon their own with the ag extension manager for our county.
Yeah, that's right. And Cindy, you know, of course, she's been to ag community and her family for 100 years here, you know, and whatnot, so they, you know, she's meeting with them. She's involved in that community, if anyone is, you know, and so she holds a lot of weight in as far as her opinion, and then what she recommends, because she's just, you know, more experienced than most in that category. So, but I think that was the assumption, that the meeting was going to be about the poultry stuff, because that's what the, the main subject was. And the community come and spoke about it. There were some poultry farmers, and they had questions about it as well. So like I say, that was what the, after listing the items that was on there, that was the ones, that was the one talked about due to the fact that that's a big industry here.
Any additional questions?
Clarify it for me.
For John, anybody got any more questions for John?
No, sir.
I don't think so right now.
Okay. Thank you, John.
So, Commissioner, I ask you, so you went over the topics concerning life safety. Is that something that, in your opinion, you feel like needs to be addressed prior to the work session and then coming back to us?
Well, I mean, any time that life safety's involved, and that comes from just, you know, from being an inspector, you know, doing that kind of work, building inspection, work, life safety's first, number one on anything. I think anybody would agree, whatever, what business you're in or whatever. So, so yeah, I, you know, if it's, if it's a life safety issue, I want to, I want to address it, you know, immediately. I mean, you don't, you don't put off life safety issue.
Absolutely.
That's not, it's not really a topic of discussion. It's a, it's a matter of whether it's a life safety issue or not. So if there's, so things that we, and that's what I was trying to discern is, you know, I do, there's been some good, some good questions and some good points brought up on several things, and you know, and I, I'm all about getting all the information, don't have a problem with that whatsoever. I don't like, I don't like doing what we've been accused of before, and that's called kicking the can. I don't like kicking the can either. So, you know, it's, so here we are, we're kind of hung up between the two, you know, if we, you know, this can keeps getting kicked. If it's things that we can act on that, that need to be handled, that really aren't a discussion topic, I would, you know, I would say that we, I would like to see that moved on as soon as we could.
Absolutely.
You know, but with respect, you know, with, and with all due respect to the Planning Commission, hey, look, those folks do, they do a great job as well, but it's, it's hard to, you know, they, you know, like we just, was just stated, you know, they've had packets for 30 days and still, and still needing to work on it. And so, you know, I just, I kind of wanted to just understand if there were certain things in the life safety department, so. And that would be basically, John, that has a lot to do with our age of our mobile homes, our living in the campers, and that kind of stuff.
So, sections 11, 12, 13, and 14 apply to poultry. Well, wait a minute, maybe not 11.
You said 14?
11, 12, 13, 14. I think it starts at 12 is poultry, 13 is poultry, 14 is poultry, 15 is solar.
Fifteen is solar. I think the rest of them would be defined as life safety things that John referred to. What about eleven? Do you, how do you interpret that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, so the illness is due to the introduction of new breeds of animals and trends in animal ownership, the non-domesticated animals may be allowed upon approval of the planning commission so long as such animals do not include chickens or any other poultry pig or other swine. Wild non-domesticated animals known to attack humans without provocation. So it's being changed to due to the introductions of new breeds of animals and trends in animal ownership, other non-domesticated animals may be allowed upon the approval of the planning commission so long as such animals do not include wild, non-domestic animals known to attack humans without being provoked.
Okay. So that's not necessarily referring to poultry farms.
Right.
But section twelve does.
Thirteen.
Section thirteen does. Section fourteen does. Section fifteen is all this solar stuff. Yeah, the rest of it is mobile homes, manufactured homes, campers.
Well, seventeen gets into the age of mobile homes.
Right, correct.
And sixteen.
Yes. But what I'm saying is if we're going to exclude poultry and solar, that will be twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen.
And give them, let them, that gives... Exclude them and let them work, the, the planning commission have their, the work session on that and then come back with, with their recommendations?
That's my motion, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chairman.
I think that's good.
With his permission, we do have a member of our planning commission, Mr. John Morehouse here. John, would, would I be putting you on the spot if, if I ask you a question?
Don't be on the spot.
I, I wouldn't put you on the spot too bad.
I just need to come up where I can hear.
Please come to the podium. Just come to the podium.
I wouldn't put you on the spot, man.
Please come to the podium.
Well, I'm doing that way you won't ever come back.
Well, I'm not the best representative, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. Well, you're the one we've got tonight.
So, so basically, since you are the only member of the planning commission that we have here, do, do you see, personally see a problem if we carved out these life safety issues and so that we could possibly look at voting on those? And then during your work session, you know, you guys would, would hear poultry and, and whatever we didn't address?
So, absolutely.
Would that be reasonable with you?
I think so.
Okay.
And, you know, room wide to say, but it seems to me very logical, very reasonable and very productive to get something done and to, you know, to, and I know, while I'm here...
Yes, sir.
Can I say, I would, I really appreciate the fact that we're kind of close knit. The only thing I hate about being the venue that we have...
Yes, sir.
Is sometimes we can't really hear when people come up and speak at the microphone because they're, they're real shy to do that.
Yes, sir.
So if, if that's within your power to kind of make a suggestion that we get together a little tighter in our planning commission meetings?
Yes, sir.
I think we'd work on that for sure.
But, but yes, to answer your question, for, in my, my way of thinking, do something tonight that we don't need to be involved in.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, John.
So then what would we do? We would look at one through eleven and sixteen through eighteen to consider tonight, leaving out twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. The first three being poultry, fifteen being solar.
So we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hart that he's saying to approve everything except for twelve, thirteen, fourteen and section fifteen. All other sections would be approved in his motion. So do we have a second to support that motion?
Certainly.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have any further discussion of the board to that motion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries with those revisions. Okay. Next item that we have, and we're going to ask Mr. Persley to come back up on as well, is ordinance number O dash two dash twenty-four dealing with our alcohol beverage ordinance. And Mr. Persley, there was, in section two talks about alcohol beverage commission is amending to include the following. A, testing events shall only be permitted, permitted inside of licensed premises. Could you speak to that again when it comes to wineries?
That's for, oh, wineries have, that's a totally separate section. It has nothing to do with retail spirit. So the state requires you cannot have open containers on the premise. We've had some issues and that's one of the reasons we're addressing this ordinance now, working with the ATF, Department of Revenue. We've ran into a lot of challenges with these stores being so many, there's things that they're doing to try to undercut the next man to make money, of course, you know? And so, yeah, that has nothing to do with wineries, with breweries, and, and...
So our ordinance allows wineries to do outdoor, outside tasting?
That's correct.
And it's a different code system.
Yeah, so you have to have a sampling license as well, besides a, you know, packaged retail spirit license. You have to have a separate license in order to even sample or do tasting. And so, part of that license, you know, you can sample or taste products that's in that retail package store. This requires you to sample inside, you cannot be, and that's, the state law does not allow you to be outside that premise to do that. So that's something we never specified previously.
And so really, this is just a cleanup from where we had that mass ordinance and we realized that, or you realized that, and you're now just fixing that issue that matches up to state law.
That's correct, yeah. This has nothing to do with wineries or breweries or, and these companies or stores can have outside sampling with a special event permit. You know, you can get an event permit to do certain things outside with the approval from the sheriff's office, road department, planning office as well, environmental health department. So they can have events, but usually an officer is required to be there because you cannot have people under the age of twenty-one and certain things that was not happening currently. So we've had this issue. And so this is just cleaning up exactly like you said.
Any other questions for John, like he's here?
May I ask you?
No, sir. You're out of order. Please have a seat. Okay, so, we do have a, okay, we do have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve the revisions in ordinance two dash twenty-four. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board on this ordinance?
Sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Ordinance modifications are approved unanimously by the board. Okay, now to our next one here, and you'll notice we had a public hearing on the animal code ordinance. You'll see there's no action item, the board wanted to wait, get additional comment tonight, which we have received on animals, on spay and neutering, and then also we're, we're seeking additional information for some other communities in Georgia that have also have gone through this process and getting some, some documentation to see how they have addressed some things. So there's not any action on the animal spay and neuter tonight. The next item we have is resolution R forty-one dash twenty-four to authorize the filing of an application with the Georgia Department of Transportation for public transportation assistance. This is what we do every year. This authorizes the chairman to, to sign the electronic documents when we file for our transit grant. So the county has been providing transit service for many, many years. It's widely used within our county, but Georgia Department of Transportation does make us apply for the grant each year and they do make us present this to the board each year to make sure the board is in agreement to continue to fund the, the portion of the grant that is required, which is, you know, fifty percent for operations and a ten percent for purchase of the bans. So this is just a routine that we do every year. So we have a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second? Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, our application, our resolution to continue our transit is approved. Okay, this next resolution will be needed. This is to enact, or basically to reenact, a temporary moratorium on solar. And so this is just redoing that. The last resolution was adopted to the board on Mar, excuse me, May the ninth, two thousand twenty-four and has expired. So this one here will reenact that until after this board can take action at another time. And so this will, put this resolution in place. It says the moratorium is enacted for temporary and emergency purposes only and shall be in effect immediately upon the adoption of this resolution and shall continue in existence for a total of a hundred and eighty days from the date of its adoption or until it is repealed or a new ordinance addressing solar energy systems is adopted, whichever event occurs first. So we have a motion to adopt this resolution to put the moratorium back in place.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board?
Sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved and the moratorium is placed back on solar. All right, so since we did not take up the distilled spirits, this next resolution to do a repeal is not going to be needed. So my recommendation would be just to let this resolution die at this time, be no action taken on this, and that way we still have our moratorium on adding any additional liquor stores. Is the board agreeable to that?
So, so this resolution repeals a previous revolution, a resolution, correct?
Well, let me just read it here, to be clear, make sure. Resolution R forty-three dash twenty-four, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County for the purpose of repealing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and issuance of applications for new license for retail package sales of distilled spirits. Whereas the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution R twenty-nine twenty-four on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, enacting a temporary emergency moratorium on the acceptance of applications for new licenses for retail package sales of distilled spirits. And whereas the board needs time to review and prepare appropriate amendments to the county alcohol ordinance to hold public hearing required by law and to adopt amendments and other ordinances. And whereas the adoption of ordinance O dash two dash twenty-four, the need for temporary emergency moratorium on the acceptance of the applications for new license for package sales, the distilled spirits no longer exist. So if we approve this, we're going to be taking this off.
Of course, when, when we did, we did that, we reduced the, the numbers. The three licenses in per, per commission district.
I see.
So, so if we had not done, had an action on this, we would have had to extend that moratorium. We took the action.
To extend it, but this, this resolution repeals...
That's right. I'm getting confused. I'm confused. I'm thinking solar and, and chickens. I'm sorry.
It would be my recommendation that, uh, R forty-three twenty-four, that you do need to vote and if you want to approve it, fine, otherwise you may be in a quandary of not being able to accept licenses even under the three number.
Right. Yeah, that was my mistake.
I don't think it'll be any harm if you want to approve this and in fact, I think there could be some confusion. If it's your intention, you should, you should go ahead and, and approve this.
Yeah, I got confused. I was thinking it's something, solar and chicken, yeah. So, yeah, we do need to pass this, so we do release that moratorium. Yes, thank you, appreciate that. All right, so we do have a motion.
Yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board, since I've got us good and confused?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is passed and the moratorium is lifted to apply for license. Okay, this next one here, resolution R forty-four dash twenty-four to authorize participation in ACCG's Interlock Risk Management Agency Supplemental Medical Accident and Disability Fund for First Responders for PTSD program. Chief, were you wanting to speak to this one at all? Okay, I will. What this is, is the state of Georgia, this last general assembly sec, session passed a law that all local jurisdictions are to provide additional insurance coverage for first responders. So this includes our fire, police, nine-one-one, as well as the corners as well. And so ACCG has pulled a program together to meet all of the qualifications and the need that was set out by the general assembly. And this would allow us to participate in that program because they are requiring us at the state level to have this insurance in place by January the first. And so this allows us to participate with your authorization of the board. So I won't read all of the, the fine print, but this is everything that they need to allow this to go through. And then this would be, like any other insurance, would be renewed annually. And so the board should, you know, make any changes on an annual basis if they see fit. This is very similar in design, it's been very successful where we had the cancer program come out for first responders. That's also ACCG put a special program together to address that requirement also, and that's been a very successful program. And over a couple of years, they've already reduced the cost of that and they've been able to lower the cost since ACCG is a, a not-for-profit organization. They don't have to make a profit on all these insurance things and so they've been able to reduce that cost as they've seen claims data. And so I anticipate this would be run very similar to that, being able to manage that through just the state of Georgia. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution R forty-four dash twenty-four to participate in this program?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is secured.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse, recuse...
Recuse yourself?
From this action because I have property that joins this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so for the record, if the clerk would record that Commissioner Hart has recused himself for the next item that we're going to look at, which is a memorandum of agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation, Walker County for right-of-way. What this is, is the state has come to us for another county bridge that they want to replace on behalf of the county using state transportation funds. And so this bridge is bridge ID number eighteen-two fifty-four at East Amertie Road and each, at East Amertie Creek, one point five miles of Villanow. So what the state is needing to do to make this work is they need to be able to acquire some additional right-of-way. So anytime the state does a bridge project that needs additional right-of-way, they put that cost burden onto the local jurisdiction. So number two, it says, based on the assessed level of complexity and the subject to the provisions of section two of this agreement, the local government shall be responsible for providing payment in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the department within thirty days from the date listed on the GDOT invoice and billing request. So us making this commitment tonight will allow GDOT to be able to move forward with their survey work and get all the information where they can then go to the property owners that have affected property and make them an offer based off of their appraisal and survey and so forth. And so if there is additional funds left over, they will return those funds to us. But this will allow us, our only cost in a complete bridge replacement that will be well over a million dollars, maybe closer to two million dollars. Our max exposure is this fifty thousand dollars. GDOT has replaced other bridges for us that did not require any additional right-of-way, didn't cost us anything out of our local money. But since this is a bridge project, when the invoice comes, this is something that could be paid out of either splash money or T-spash money, either one, because it involves transportation improvements. And so this is one heck of a deal to get a new bridge and our skin in the game is fifty thousand dollars. $50,000.
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. I'll sign all these, there's a lot of pages here to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make the record known that Commissioner Hart did not vote because he recused himself, and so the moratorium, excuse me, the memorandum of agreement did pass, so thank you for that, and Mr. Hart, you can return. Okay, the next item we have, this is also some annual housekeeping, we've been requested by the Family Crisis Center. You see all the partners there listed in our community. This is a letter that they need basically, or an agreement, I guess more so an agreement that shows that we support what the cottage does and that we agree to the following, that they will provide 24-hour care and assistance for youth ages 11 to 21 in our four county area, provide all services free of discrimination on the basis of political affiliation, religion, race, sex, ethnicity, gender, handicap, or age, provide a human service professional liaison 24/7 to meet the youth's needs, four, provide a safe, stable environment where youth are empowered to develop personal interests and further goals towards success, provides the youth appropriate referrals based on needs, six, providing follow-up services and support, seven, confidentiality for all client services, eight, to work in cooperation with each signing, signed party of the memorandum of understanding in carrying out the duties of the agency, the partners agree to make appropriate referrals to the cottage as needed to cooperate with the cottage staff and volunteers in the performance of their duties, three, partners participating with the cottage shall maintain all information regarding at-risk youth program cases confidential as required by state and federal law, rules, and regulations. So that this does, it just renews our commitment to follow those items there. This helps them with their grant funding and other things that they need to show they do have local support of their local partners. So do we have a motion to approve this ongoing memorandum?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, the next we have is a grant for easement between Garrison Investment LLC in Walker County, Georgia. So this is something that we have asked for. This is over on Osborne Road where we are working to get ready to construct the sidewalk surface system to get people from the Chickamauga Battlefield to the Chickamauga city limits. In the engineering assessments and environmental assessments, they have determined that there is a large historic will of oak that is currently sits within the right-of-way blocking from the intended use of the public. So the landowner has been so very gracious to grant this easement so we can go around this tree and we don't have to cut this tree down because it's a very nice tree, and it's a beautiful tree, and we don't want to see it destroyed. And so it's been recommended to us by our partners that's been working with us on this to accept this easement so we can get our sidewalk system in without destroying this tree. So do we have any questions or concerns about this, signing off on this easement?
No, sir, not at all.
So do we have a motion to accept?
I should accept.
We have a motion to accept by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. All right, the next that we have is a purchase order 2025-243.
Excuse me.
For $34,658.24 to Point Security for courthouse security equipment funded from our ARPA. Is there anyone here from the sheriff's office of the court system that was coming to speak to this tonight? Okay, this has been a collaborative project between our sheriff and his security plan and also with all four judges of our Superior Court, and they have requested that the county fund an additional X-ray scanner and walkthrough metal detector. So I did reach out to each of the, the board members and, well, in collaboration, myself and Commissioner Askew both reached out to each, each member and gave me verbal approval since the courts wanted to get this moving as quick as possible. So this unit, these two units have been ordered, so our action here tonight would be for this board to ratify this purchase order. So in full disclosure, these, these items have already been ordered. This is the vendor that the sheriff's department uses and all of their other security systems, so this is the one that they wanted, and this is the one the judges wanted. And so we were able to get this actually ordered on November the 5th, and so we did not delay, you know, we gained some days there because these units, I've been told, are about five weeks out from the order date.
This is going to be installed at the third floor?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for that. So this will be installed at the third floor of the main courthouse before someone goes into the Superior Court or to the state courtroom. This would be on the third floor, so thank you. Yes, I forgot that. So do we have a motion to ratify a purchase order 2025-243 in the amount of $34,658.24 from Point Security?
Motion to ratify.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is ratified. Okay, the next we have is FY24 Edward Brier Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, it's better known as the JAG Grant. This was sent over to us by the sheriff's department. They do apply for this grant every year. It provides them funding, and as far as I know, they have received this grant every year. Is there anyone here from the sheriff's office that was going to speak to this? Okay, so this is another one of those that we, we do consistently every year, but Captain Anderson asked that this be presented to the board, which authorizes him to be able to apply for this grant. Any concerns or questions of the board on this grant application?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries to move forward with that grant application. All right, then we're going to jump down to our items where we amended the agenda on the municipal equipment, purchase order number 2025-289 in the amount of $45,000. And Assistant Chief Nathan Farrow is going to come and speak to this tonight. You have the floor.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, board, thank y'all for getting this on here tonight. This is coming out of our 2025 capital outlay plan we've already put in for our budget to do this. Our intention was to purchase one after the first of the year. Last week, Chief Hodge got an email from Municipal Equipment saying that they had a demo available. This demo's been used one time at a fire service conference. It has 16 hours on it, comes with the same warranty. We have a, we have a current quote for the one at $45,000 to include installation. The same unit today with zero hours is around $58,000. This saves the county $13,000. We were also informed that there's going to be a 4% cost increase in January, so if this same unit's purchased in January 25, the total cost is going to exceed $60,000, and we're looking at about a $15,000 savings if we jump on this thing now. We purchased one a couple of years ago that's up in Chickamauga. This one will be at headquarters at Station 20 on our trading facility, fills two bottles, comes with a cascade system of four bottles that also backs up the compressor, so it's a, it's a really good deal to get on quickly.
Questions for Assistant Chief Farrow? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, sir, it's approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Nathan.
Okay, the next item we have is an agreement with EPD for license and access agreement for county-owned property on North Marble Top Road, and I have asked our county attorney if he would give us just a overview of this document since he has been working with the legal department with EPD.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This is an access agreement, and I'm going to try to cut through the legalese. Here's the deal. As you know, the county owns a church pit on North Marble Top Road. Adjoining our property is a private piece of property that EPD has determined has significant hazardous materials on. When I, I have been negotiating the terms of this agreement with the EPD, and the reason it was a late add to the agenda was because we literally finished it up this morning. The gist of it is, is that EPD believes there are about 250 containers of hazardous substance that they've identified. They need access to that property. The most reasonable access is to go through our church pit area. Carlin Bowers has already met with the folks and has mapped out an agreeable trail or road that obviously would be rather rough. It's not going to be like a finished road to, is that correct? It's not going to be a finished road. But it's going to allow them to bring their equipment across our property to get to the contaminated property, and then, once they have picked up this contaminated property, to again, access our property to get it out onto a public road and out of there. Candidly, they could just do it by enforcement, they would have the power to come across, but I'm pleased that we have been able to reach an agreement which is probably a little bit more favorable to us anytime we can reach a mutual agreement as opposed to the EPD saying, well, this is the way it goes, boys, that's what we want to do. And this is no cost to us, and there is a significant benefit because if this contaminated substance remains on the adjoining property, there's always the potential for leakage or anything. So they're going to remove it, we're going to be better for it. The county, the private property owner, and the citizens will be better to have, obviously, this property removed, the hazardous materials removed. So it's signed by both parties, so tonight we're requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve this license and access agreement as EPD typically does. We sign first, they sign second. It's okay because we've hammered out all the terms of it. So my suggestion would be to approve this, and then I will forward it on tomorrow to EPD. Probably within a week, we'll have a signed agreement back, and they will begin the process. They've informed me that they have already lined up a company that they've contracted with to initiate the process. They're ready to go. We hope that they can get a lot of that out before the weather turns. It's one of those things, you never know what you get until you get into, into there and see what, all the extent of it. But they feel pretty comfortable. I mean, they, they have mapped it out, and, you know, I asked them, what do they think the overall time period will be? And he said, well, probably within a year or two, year and a half, and the reason for that amount of time is they're going to put some wells in there, and they will monitor on, on the adjoining property, on the contaminated property. And they will monitor those wells for a certain period of time while the wells are open to make sure that no contamination has leaked out of these barrels into the ground. Then they will go back and they will put some type of a seal over the wells, and, you know, so I think it's a good thing for us, good thing for our citizens, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them for you.
Any questions?
I'm good, thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this license and access agreement?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is approved. Okay, the next we have is our department statistics that you can see, our, our information for the, for the month. Obviously, this time of year, Mountain Cove Farms gets busier, so they had 68 people, or 68 nights, not people, but 68 nights booked in October, 48 nights booked in September. And then we continue to still get a lot of visits to our website. There was some people that did opt out of our newsletter subscription, so that went down by, by 18, but you'll see on the left side, we still have 6,153 total newsletter subscribers in our e-newsletter. Our Sirens GPS, I guess with the hurricane, is coming through our Georgia. We had 131 additional people sign up for the Sirens GPS, so we're at 6,492 subscribers to that, so that gets us adding 999 subscribers just this year, so that's a, that's a real good number to add to that. We continue to fix potholes and run transit, and we also have a breakout of our, of our animal, through our best friend's data as well. So at this time, we'll move forward into our commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Blakemore.
Appreciate everybody coming out, been involved. As always, appreciate the hard work and dedication from our county employees, and hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Askew.
Ditto. Now, thank you, thanks for the participation. Like I said, sometimes we, we get, we go back and forth, but that's how we make good decisions, is getting the input and trying to work together, so appreciate that, and do have happy holidays, Thanksgiving, and we'll see y'all before Christmas.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you very much for being here. A lot of great events happened last week in Walker County. We had a lot of veterans events, Mark spoke at one, had a parade in Lafette that was very successful in thanks to the city of Lafette, Chauncey Fall for putting that on, the American Legion Post 339, that was a great event. Also Tyler Harper, the Georgia Secretary of Ag, came and spoke to the Farm Bureau group Tu- Tuesday night. Yeah, Tuesday night. It was also a very great event. So it's a lot, lot going on, a lot of positive things happening in the county, so thank you. Robert?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the hard work and dedication our employees do. You guys do a wonderful job, and just appreciate your dedication. Getting back to the veterans event on Tuesday night, it was a wonderful event, appreciate all the veterans coming out. Mark did a wonderful job speaking regarding veterans and patriots, and I want to thank, there's a lot of folks I'm going to miss here, but I want to thank Randy Pittman and Tina Gross for really doing a great job with that event.
For sure.
It was wonderful. And just wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One thing additionally that I will add is we did have the ribbon cutting this week at our Venture Acres up on Salem Road in Rossville, where we had the ribbon cutting for our splash pad, playground, walking track, and picnic pavilion. And so pillar construction has broken ground and already has the actual spot for the pavilion already on grade, and so that project hopefully will be moving rather quickly, and the target date is to have the park open by Memorial Day in 2025. So if we can get some decent weather, they feel very optimistic that with cooperation of weather, they'll be able to have that park ready to open up on Memorial Day weekend, where we would open up the splash pad as well and allow people to, to utilize that splash pad and playground at, at no additional cost, and that come from some grant funding as well as the board using some of the ARPA funds. So very exciting project. If you haven't been up there to look at that, it's on Salem Road, across the side street from the old rock quarry, and there's a large sign up that shows the renderings of what the project will look that shows the renderings of what the project will look like if you haven't already seen those, so very tickled to get that project off the ground. It's like many other projects, getting one to the state of a ribbon cutting, you've already done about sixty to seventy percent of the work. The construction's the easy part, so there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work and all types of environmental assessment data and everything that went into that, and Joe Leguiz has been our point on that project, and he's done a phenomenal job pulling that together and keeping that project moving, so thank you, Joe, for all your work on that. So tonight, we also want to mention that due to the holiday schedule, our next meeting will be at six-thirty PM on Thursday, December the nineteenth, so that is a scheduling change that the Board voted on at the last meeting, so that will, there's only one scheduled meeting in December before the end of the year, so please make note of that change of December the nineteenth, back here at six-thirty. We do not have any reasons for an executive session tonight, so do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, y'all.